I'd like to call the order. The Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting today is Wednesday, July 12, 2007, at 7:00. Please pay respects to the flag.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Count, please note the roll.
Noted.
Approval of the agenda. I believe for a greater
Oh, thank you.
An add-on, and I don't support, loves everyone. Yeah, this is a recent resolution provided by Attorney Ron Coughlin, Dr. LQ. And with that, supervisor, the penalty that has item 13 PM finished business, I would help you resolution. And I'd like to apologize for the lateness of it. We didn't get it. I just printed it off, as a matter of fact. It's with the ongoing LQ situation. Apologize for the lateness of getting it, but we are where we are. Let's move on to
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to the approval of the consent agenda. Questions? Comments?
I make a motion with consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? Roll call.
Kirsty Curtis.
Yes.
Kirsty Payne.
Yes.
Kirsty Nichols.
Yes.
Kirsty Dar.
Yes.
Kirsty Ferrari.
Yes.
Kirsty Wright, yes, supervisor Don.
Yes. Let's move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. Mr. Davis.
Good evening. I just want to bring up today on some bond projects that we're doing. The tenants' course event, we've got both coats of asphalt fences up. Now, we attempted to start painting the courts last Sunday, but due to the weather, we're kind of pushed back, so hopefully the courts will be completed this week with paint. Birmingham Steel Corning Hens come in and put in the AD8 park benches next week, so hopefully we'll get our tenants' courts back open within two weeks. Nothing else to report on the bond projects. The office at Seymour, it's been painted. We're expecting floor covering later part of this week, right next week. HVAC is done. Our tentative date is to open August 7th to the general public. Keep in mind, the original bid to do the construction was $500,000. We received $420,000 from the sale of the Bats Hall, and currently we're sitting at $378,000. But a few changes, so we will be way under bid for the project, as we stated to the board when we went forward with the project. And if you didn't know, we had a little party this weekend, this past weekend out at Seymour Lake Park.
Was it a success?
I think it was, I guess. I don't remember any much of it, but Friday, I think we had around 5,000 people, but I know Bill Dunne was there Saturday, and I want to thank Bill for his help Saturday, helping us work the gates, and he came out Sunday morning helping park. But I'm here to tell you, Saturday night, there was over 15,000 people in that park. And I met people from Port Huron to Birmingham to West Bloomfield, so to think that Parks and Rec is this bad and balls, you're sorely mistaken. So that's a huge shot to our community. And again, I want to thank Bill. Again, he was out there Sunday morning at 7:30 helping us clean. I want to thank Pete and Dave and the fire department for their continued support, and a big thanks to Lieutenant Patterson, Sergeant Lenz, and our local sheriff department, and certainly my staff.
You can always use more help, right?
We need volunteers. The staff in six can no longer continue to do this. So if you want to volunteer next year, again, I'm not putting Bill on the spot, he's done it the last two or three years. You know, especially Sunday morning, we're back there. We leave there at 1:30 or 2:00 in the morning, we're back there at 5:30 the next morning, trying to get the park back, and it is cleaned by 1 o'clock on Sunday. So if anybody wants to come out and just help us park cars, or just get involved with your community and give back, we'd love to have it. Next year dates start July 6th and 7th, so.
I don't normally comment on items not on the agenda, but you secure this for the next few years?
We are locked in with this carnival company through 2019, and then we've met with them, and then starting 2020, we have our own, we finally earned our own weekend. What that means is it'll always be the weekend before Father's Day starting in 2020. It takes a lot for a carnival company to invest that into your community. So it's taken us 11 years to do it, but they're impressed with what they see. So what that means to us is they'll bring every right they have, probably take three-quarters of that youth complex, and when they leave us after that show, they'll go to Canton. So it works out for them, but it just took a lot of time to build their confidence. So it just speaks about how much of our community, how supportive they are, and people like Bill coming out and volunteering. So if you want to get involved next year, we'd love to have it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other comments on items not on the agenda? Sign note, and we'll end. Public hearing, the vacating of a portion of Church Street located within the Charter Township of Oxford and the village of Oxford.
I moved open the public hearing regarding vacating a portion of Church Street located within the Charter Township of Oxford at 7:04 PM.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Curtis. We're now in session. Sorry. Roll call, sorry. Kirsty Dar.
Yes.
Kirsty Nichols.
Yes.
Kirsty Wright, yes, supervisor Don.
Yes.
Kirsty Ferrari.
Yes.
Kirsty Payne.
Yes.
And Kirsty Curtis.
Yes.
Thanks for the help, Kurt. Any public comment on the vacating of Church Street, which is right next to our fire department number one? Partly in the village, partly in the township. Is there a motion to close?
I moved to close the public hearing regarding the vacating of a portion of Church Street located within the Charter Township of Oxford at 7:05 PM.
Support.
It moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Will there be a motion?
(inaudible)
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 The Oxford Township Board of Trustees approves the resolution vacating a portion of Church Street outside of Village of Oxford. Ask for ZDF, William Oxford Township also authorized the combination of vacated boat property, little corner piece, large industrial machine products, IP parcel number of P042244013.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Comments? Roll call. Kirsty Nichols.
Yes.
Kirsty Curtis.
Yes.
Kirsty Dar.
Yes.
Kirsty Wright, yes, supervisor Don.
Yes.
Kirsty Ferrari.
Yes.
And Kirsty Payne. Yes.
I'm about the favorite part of my year, is inviting our auditor up here to tell us what we did wrong or did right. For Curtis, right.
I'll leave them. Thank you. Again, well
Please state who you are.
I'm Raina Emmets. You don't understand, it's very
We're here to help you.
Thank you. You've been great. My name is Raina Emmets. I'm a partner with PSLZ. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you the Charter Township of Oxford's audited financial statements for your fiscal year ended December 31st, 2016. And I'm going to jump into highlights, but I really would like to start out with, because I would be remiss, this is such a big project, and as the township has grown and has, there's a lot going on here in the township, and I really must say, it's all hands on deck on this audit, and I want to say thank you. I always get a lot of support from the board and the administrative officials specifically, and also the fire department, Joanne, Pete, Ron, the Parks and Rec, I mean, and their staffs. Everyone is really, anything I need, they make it available, they're accommodating, and we get it done. So there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle these days, so I just wanted to start out with that. General fund. So we added $371,000 to the bottom line this year, and that's after we made a significant transfer to Parks and Rec toward the
260,000?
260-some thousand. In total, you transferred out about 285,000 of operating transfers, because most of that was Parks and Rec this year. But so even after we made the transfers, we were able to add to the bottom line. And I know coming in, when I walked into the audit this year, it was a concern, just to make sure that we were going to end up right where you thought we were going to end up at December 31st, because we had already started making some plans in 2017 for some of the general fund fund balance. So you ended up right where you thought you would, so I'm happy to report that, that your plans are still in place as far as I know. And you certainly came in within budget in the general fund, so that's also something that we look at, to make sure that you are keeping an eye on the expenditures and, you know, or not just doing things during the year without planning for them. So you came in right where you had expected to come in, both in the fund balance and under budget. This was the first year of the new fire operating village, which replaced the old fire EMS and the ALS villages, the two separate villages you had. So this is the first year we collected that, so it's the first year showing us revenue, I should say, in the audit. It was a 2015 tax roll, which is your 2016 revenue. That came in at about 2.6 million of revenue this year to run the fire department. We also issued a new park bond this year of $2 million, and subsequently, you will be collecting the park debt village in order to pay that back over time. The, so in the water and sewer fund, you did have an operating loss in the water fund once again, but your activity, your development activity here within the township, you've had your water and sewer capital charges almost doubled this year from the year before, and that's not having to do anything with what your fee is, it's more of the development activities, the volume, that made us double almost in those revenues. So you actually came out, we didn't end up using water fund, we actually were able to add a little bit to the bottom line of that, which, again, that is, I know you keep a very close eye on the water and sewer funds, you've done significant work on that, and I commend you for doing that, because it is, it's a very tricky thing, there's a lot of moving pieces to that. Some are long-term and some are short-term, and some are out of your control, like the Oakland County Interceptor debt that the county hands down to you, or the county quarterly charges that just get handed off to you, you really have no control over those. So thank, you know, it's great that you're paying attention to that, you watch that monthly, and again, we didn't end up with any surprises at the end of that, but you are planning for that, because like I said, a lot of these pieces are long-term in the water and sewer fund. You've got a lot of activity going on right now. Also, something that we usually touch on here in the audit is the pension plan. This is the second year of the new reporting on the pension funding. You show
Right on the page you said.
Page 47. It shows the prior year, we were 62% funded, and this year is showing that we dropped to 54%. Not numbers I like to typically use, however, I don't want you to be alarmed in any way. I mean, we like to see you in the 70% range, and we, meaning the auditor, the state, erating
But Raina, this didn't, you didn't account for the 200,000 we put in.
Oh, well, we're getting to that.
Okay.
So not to be alarmed about the drop in the funding percentage. Couple things in play, just in the, the year we're showing here is actually 2015 because of how the actuarial valuations are, the timing of that. We would just now be filing, I'm not sure we'd be even filing the audit, because the new MERS, the 2016 report just came out. So that's why we're always a year behind in the MERS reporting on the financial statements. The, in the year that we're reporting, the actuaries have changed pretty much all the assumptions. They are using a much newer mortality table, they changed the smoothing of the funding from 10 years down to five years, they lowered the discount rate, they, you know, pretty much everything that you could impact, they impacted. They also, another thing we could take into consideration when looking into the pension funding, is you now have to calculate every year, how much you actually, the investment, return on investment that you received that year, the actual, versus what the actuaries told you that, you know, had planned projected for you.
It's not the 8% they planned?
No. Well, funny thing, Bill. So, no. And so that all negatively impacted everything, however, given all that, the township contributed everything that you were required to contribute, everything the actuaries told you to contribute, and that's And in addition to that, in 2017, you made a lump sum contribution of $200,000 to the pension plan, which probably won't impact these numbers for two years. So just keep that in mind, and we'll talk about that two years from now. So hopefully, it'll show as a very positive thing. So again, we show a drop in funding, but I don't want you to be alarmed about any of that, there are a lot of pieces here that are impacting that. Of course, some of that has to do with MERS and their rate of return on their investments. They actually have been doing a pretty decent job on that, but there's pluses, minuses. But you are doing, the township is doing everything you're supposed to be doing, and then some, and you are being proactive, which is, you know, we talked about it a year ago, and you went ahead and you're already in motion. So with that, I guess I'll say one last thing. Of course, there's always a new Gatsby, governmental accounting standards, more pronouncement coming. Next year's another big one. So last year was the pension, this year, next year coming up is the post-retirement healthcare. And they want that pretty much to mirror the pension pronouncement that we had last year. And so I've been working with Curtis on that, where there's a few things we have to, we have to work on as far as actuarial type things, make sure that you're all set on those type of things. So we'll get back to you when we have more to report on that, but that's coming up, so that's next year. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to
Good, Doug.
I read your letter dated June 1st, 2007. First paragraph, accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the township's internal control. Second paragraph was, we identified certain deficiencies in the internal control that we consider to be significant deficiencies. Who should be going through these internal controls? Do we, I don't understand, Bill, who needs to be looking at these to turn these internal controls around so that we are non-deficient?
Okay, so I'll clarify that. There are two letters that actually came with the audit, and
It says that every year.
It says that every year. In fact, I'll tell you that these, maybe the first page of this one, where we talk about fair value measurement, we instituted a new Gatsby this year, but it just had to do with the investments. The letter that you're referring to, the two-page letter
Yes.
We have to give that to you per the AICPA, because they think that you don't know that the auditor's preparing the financial statements. Now, that does not impair my independence. I have, the administrative officials do review the financial statements, and they call me up or email me and say, hey, we think this might not be accurate, this, you need to take, double-check this, and so we go through it. We, you know, there's checks and balances here on that. It's not just me doing the audit and no one looks at it and all that. So we have to tell you, so the township chooses to have the auditor prepare the financial statements, instead of having an in-house CPA that sits there and learns all the Gaspys and make sure that, you know, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. That's really the only comment in there.
Okay, so you tell us we have significant deficiencies, but we really don't?
I'm saying I'm required to tell you that I draft the
We don't know if we do.
No, no. The AICPA classifies that as a significant deficiency. They think, because they want us to report to those who govern, which is the township board. They want to make sure you know that you're not drafting it in-house, that I'm doing it for you. And that is the extent
We get that same paragraph almost every year.
Yes.
Every year we have. But if my doctor told me I was sick every year and had a significant deficiency, I'd go looking for that deficiency.
Great.
So here I am, a trustee who's in charge of
Okay.
Conducive responsibility of the township, and I see that we are significantly deficient in our internal controls. That to me tells me we're kind of like a loose cannon with our money.
That is not how I would say it, though, but that's a very fair question, but let me put this in perspective. So how you would fix that, how you would get rid of this whole letter
Yes.
And that one little comment?
Yes.
You need to hire an in-house CPA.
I'll talk to Bill tomorrow.
So most communities, most communities your size
Yeah.
Choose, they look at the economic benefit, you know, versus the practicality, well, and that's why, you know, we, honestly, we think this is ridiculous, but I have to give this to you per
As it's on record, I asked the question, if we have an internal control
That's how you solve it.
We should investigate it. If this is a letter that has to be given to us, because they think we're stupid, well, we'll take that. That's the easiest thing they call this today.
So we're required, and there's statements on auditing standards, it isn't just for municipalities, it's anyone who's getting an audit. So even if it's a company, they would get this letter also. They want you to know whether you're the board of directors, or the, you know, city council, or
If you went to the pearly gates, they're going to get this letter, too.
The audit committee, well, they may.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Raina?
I moved to receive and file the Charter Township of Oxford audited financial report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2016 as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? There is a copy of this for anyone at the township, if you'd like to review it. And it's on the website, too, also. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Raina.
Thank you.
SEMCOG. I've set a meeting with all the supervisors about a month ago, and SEMCOG was there, and I've heard some pretty nice things about SEMCOG and what they can do for communities like us. At one time, we were a member of SEMCOG, but it seemed like every year, we were paying money to SEMCOG and not getting anything back. I think a lot of that had to do with us, because I don't think we attended all the meetings that we should have attended. And, you know, I'm going to stop rambling and allow you guys to come up here and try to talk us into rejoining SEMCOG, why you should do this. Your name is Amy?
Yes, my name is Amy Malmer. I'm SEMCOG's membership manager, and with me is Tyler Cliffman. He works with the plan implementation team at SEMCOG. And we're going to talk to you about the top five reasons you should join SEMCOG. I'm going to cover a couple, and then Tyler's going to take over and get into some of the great data and services that we can offer you, should you decide to join. So first, I wanted to just give you a little bit of context for the area that SEMCOG works in. We work in these seven counties of southeast Michigan, kind of in the corner of our state, and this gives you a little context in terms of where we fit within the state and our proximity to Canada and Ohio. This map shows the communities that are members of SEMCOG in the blue shading there. All seven counties are members. We also have six of the seven intermediate school districts as members, and several community colleges. And we're currently at, there's 170 total members right now. The funding that SEMCOG uses is provided in part by membership dues, and we use those dues to match federal and state grants. Should you decide to join SEMCOG, like every community that does, you would need to vote to join, you would then pay membership dues, and you would appoint a delegate and alternate to our general assembly, which is our full membership committee. That group meets three times a year, so that's kind of the minimum commitment that we like to see, to have someone come to those three meetings, but we have various other task forces and networking opportunities that you can take part in as well. And just so you know, in, starting in 20, any time in 2017, should the Oxford Township decide to join, dues would be $2,238 for a 12-month period. So the first of our five reasons you should join SEMCOG is you can magnify your voice by joining with those 170 other SEMCOG members that I mentioned. Southeast Michigan is a large region with considerable clout, considerable complexity, and a lot of opportunities. SEMCOG members work together on behalf of the 4.7 million people who live in the seven counties to improve water quality, make the transportation system safer and more efficient, revitalize communities, and spur economic development. One of the ways we do that is by working with our partners at the federal and state levels. So together, the elected leaders of SEMCOG use their influence to impact important federal and state legislation and regulations. Some examples of that include, SEMCOG is opposed to expanding the definition of wetlands at the federal level. The expanded definition may require that ditch maintenance be a permitted activity. Right now, it looks like the current administration wants to return to the original definition of wetlands, which we support, but in the meantime, we're talking with our congressional delegation and senators about the impacts that that expanded definition would have. Another example at the state level is when the governor announced that he would fund two pilot programs to identify the location and condition of infrastructure, primarily water and sewer infrastructure. We worked hard to make sure, and we're successful, in getting one of those pilot programs here in southeast Michigan, and work is underway on that project as we speak. SEMCOG has also helped over the years to secure DNR trust funds for various projects in the region. We helped to maintain, most recently, helped to maintain the project selection process. There was a move to have the projects be selected by the legislature instead of the trust fund board, which we think is a good, good selection process, has been a good selection process. So we voiced our opinion that that should stay as is, which it has. Finally, we have a staff member currently serving on two Department of Environmental Quality rulemaking committees that are considering rule changes to drinking water standards and sanitary sewer permitting. And the way we've earned access to those kinds of committees is both through our membership and through the expertise of our staff. And getting on those kinds of rulemaking committees helps to make sure that local government perspective is taken into consideration as they're looking at changing various rules. So the second reason to join SEMCOG is to network and learn from others. Our membership is organizational, so while if you joined, you would appoint a delegate and an alternate who would kind of be our point people and vote on behalf of the township at the general assembly meetings. All of you are welcome to attend our meetings and participate in our meetings fully. Attend workshops, which we call SEMCOG Universities. Contact our staff for data and information, and join committees and task forces. These are a couple of the workshop and training sessions that we have scheduled for the summer. Our summer schedule is a little wider since people are taking vacations and enjoying the weather, but on average, we have about one training session per month that covers a variety of topics, and all of those are free to any of you or the staff at the township. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler for the last three reasons.
All right. Thanks, Amy. So one of SEMCOG's major responsibilities is developing and implementing regional plans, and they provide some direction for the region by looking at past and current data and trends to help develop policies and actions for implementation. So over the past few years, we've completed a number of major regional plans, including some on traffic safety, access to core services, bicycle and pedestrian travel, economic development, and green infrastructure. We're currently working on updating our water resources plan from 1999. The development of that plan is guided through a 60-person task force that's being chaired by Orient Township Supervisor Chris Barnett. So that plan is looking at a broad range of water issues, including infrastructure, drinking water, sanitary sewers, stormwater, issues related to pipelines, and of course, natural resources, like invasive species, and some of the economic development benefits that are afforded by our water that come from tourism and recreation. Additionally, SEMCOG guides members in developing the region's transportation plan, so that prioritizes spending on the region's roads, transit, walking and biking trails to the tune of $1 billion a year. Those transportation projects are critical to preserving jobs, the economy, improving delivery of services, goods, and freight. So we work closely with Oakland County as well to collect, share, and analyze data on traffic counts, pavement condition, traffic crashes, all of which help to prioritize projects in the county and then within the larger region as well. in the county and then within the larger region as well. We're currently developing the region's next transportation plan, looking out to 2045, and seeking input. So earlier this month, we launched this interactive tool on our website, as a way for communities across the region to provide important feedback on our transportation system. So we would certainly welcome your input on that as well. The next reason that we want to talk about is data analysis, because high-quality data is the foundation of a lot of the work we do. So much of that is already available on our website to anybody, but our members have access to the people behind the scenes to compile that data and are available to help conduct an analysis on any sort of project or any specific situation you may need. So we have a few slides to look at some of our recent data projects. So this is our newest resource, it's called Park Finder, and it includes an inventory of more than 2,600 of the region's parks, searchable by all sorts of filters, location, size, type, and then all of the amenities that are within them. So whether you're looking for a dog park, or a kayak launch, even restrooms, this is a tool to help see what's out there. And so it gets down, regardless of ownership, it looks at everything across the region and gives those details. So in the year ahead, we'll be convening a new task force to look at coordination and regional gaps in this park system, see how these amenities serve the people in the region. And so that task force will help us develop policies and priorities related to parks. So we also share and analyze crash data in usable and easy-to-understand formats. So shown here on the left is a map of Oakland County, high-priority safety locations, including intersections, road segments, roundabouts. They're prioritized based on having a disproportionate number of crashes, and compared to similar locations across the region. And maybe a little hard to see on this screen, but the map on the right is a crash severity map for the township over the past five years. So another way we look at data is through this interactive mapping tool that allows you to discover where people in the township work, where people from the township, where people who work in the township are coming from, and how many people who live here also work here. So this map is showing us right now that over 7,600 residents commute from other parts of the region and state each day, the largest commuting destinations being Orient Township, Auburn Hills, Troy, and Pontiac. And additionally, 1,500 people both live and work in the township. Last month, we released data on residential construction in the region, which gives important perspectives on growth as a region. And in 2016, Oxford Township issued 225 new residential building permits, making this one of the region's hotspots for residential construction, as you can see in the top portion of the map there. So finally, I'm gonna talk briefly about some of the technical assistance we can provide from our staff. So assisting local efforts, we can analyze and share crash data in easy-to-understand formats that help to prioritize new projects, that help to reduce the traffic crashes. We have a variety of tools and databases to assist with bicycle and pedestrian planning efforts, so our staff provides guidance on circulation plans, safe routes to school projects, crash analysis, and other important non-motorized travel issues. We're currently engaging members in a walk, bike, drive, safe educational campaign that emphasizes safety tips for walking, biking, and driving, as well as explanations of state laws that they may not be aware of, infrastructure, and also signage. One of our other priorities is to enhance connectivity and fill in the gaps in this regional trail system, so developing the Iron Bell Trail is one of those projects. And so to facilitate that process, we're working with local cities, townships, and villages to better understand what their priorities are, because this is statewide trail, we want this to also reflect the communities that passes through what they want to see in their areas. And we also administer the Transportation Alternatives Program, so that's a major funding source for enhancing a lot of these pedestrian and bicycle projects. So here are four projects in Oakland County that were funded through the TAP program. The top two were recently completed in Rochester Hills and Auburn Hills. The bottom two were funded for the next fiscal year. Finally, we offer assistance with parks and recreation planning as well, whether it's assistance with grant applications, planning processes, any type of coordination opportunities that you may be looking for to enhance parks and recreation. So with that, we just want to thank you for your time tonight, and maybe answer any questions you might have.
Let's start with questions. Anybody have any questions?
I have no questions.
You know, I've been hearing a lot of good things about SEMCOG through my travels, especially with the meeting with supervisors. I think I could recommend that we do join, rejoin SEMCOG. As a matter of fact, if there's no questions, I'm gonna make a motion that we rejoin SEMCOG-
I have a question.
I'm just gonna make a motion, I won't get to you, that we rejoin SEMCOG and make Joe Ferrari the point person. And I will volunteer myself, rather than anybody here, to be the alternate, unless someone else would like to do that. That's my motion. It's been moved, and second question.
Yeah, a question I have, you said that we belonged to SEMCOG at one time?
Yes, I believe that. We stopped back in about 2005.
Do you know why they discontinued it?
Because we really didn't pay much attention to SEMCOG, we didn't get much use out of it. I mean, it's not SEMCOG's problem, I believe it was Oxford Township's problem. I know, I didn't go to the meetings, and I don't know who did. And after a while, you just got tired of paying the money, and so it's you. You know, times have changed, we've got a lot of things going on. I think you can give us a lot of help, whether it's in trying to get some money for bike paths, or whatever, helping with Iron Bell. I just think it's important that we use the resource. That's why I know Joe's gonna do a good job, he's gonna go to all the meetings, and so I don't have to go.
I appreciate the perspective, and if you don't mind, I just wanted to mention something that we've instituted since, sorry. Something we've instituted since the township was last a member is an orientation process for the delegate and alternate, where we try to spend some time with you to figure out what are your priorities for your-
First, where's your college?
Yeah. Where we can match our resources with the kinds of things that are priorities for you. So we're trying to do our part as well to help you navigate our structure and our organization.
I think it might be helpful if I joined Joe for the first couple of meetings, so I can be orientated, too.
Absolutely.
Generally speaking, where are the meetings held?
These are all over.
The General Assembly meetings that I mentioned rotate around Oakland, McComb, and Wayne County. And then if you're on a committee or a task force, things like that, those are generally held at our offices in Detroit. We do try to come out to every county at least once a year. This year, we'll be out twice, one time to facilitate some public input sessions on the regional transportation plan, and another time to talk about our 2045 regional development forecast.
Rob, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. I didn't know we weren't currently in it either, but I can tell you all the grants that we've written, or I've written through the trust fund, that are viable asset. And you look at the trust fund grant, and they pretty much spell out, you know, all of SEMCOG. So they bring a lot of good things to the table as far as advocacy, and you just brought that up about the, they were trying to pass legislation to take the trust fund out of the trust fund board and hand it over to legislation, and that'd been a big mistake. So people like this and our state association are viable to keeping the trust fund the way it is. So it's something we desperately should really take a look at now, and encourage you to get back into SEMCOG, especially from the Parks Department standpoint, what they've done for us in the past.
Thank you, Rob. Any other guests? With joining SEMCOG, will this be a link that we can put on our website, the access for anybody in the township to access? For the data?
Yeah, yes.
Because there is a lot of data there. You know, the billing and that, based upon the calendar here.
That is up to you. Generally, we bill, start billing for a 12-month period in the month that you join, but if that's not convenient, if you want the billing to happen on your fiscal year, we'll work with you to pro-rate and get you on the schedule that you like.
Any other questions? Roll call. Chris Nichols.
Yes.
Tony Curtis.
Yes.
Tony Penny.
Yes.
Chris Dervin.
Yes.
Roger Burry.
Yes.
Roger, yes, being supervisor now. Yes. Okay, guys, if you'd like to leave, go ahead, unless you want to stick around and listen to the rest. Your experience. Let's move on to the first reading, Proposory Zoning, approximately 4.5 acre parcel, another 2.73 acre parcel. Would like to start? Okay, we'll take a couple minutes to recess while SEMCOG leaves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who, is there a petitioner here? Would like to say something?
Good evening, Mike Vazola, Design and Architecture, Rochester, Michigan, representing Consort Development. Developer, we've worked with the developer for, oh, between five, 10 years. They came to us about three or four years ago, interested in this parcel, prior around 2005. They expressed a desire to develop the parcels, vacant parcels, as multi-family condominium development. We met with the Mr. Dunn, Ms. Burns, at the time, I guess, Ms. Cushing, Township Engineer, and we determined that, it was determined that rezoning to multi-family for a village commercial makes quite a bit of sense. The utilities are there, it's a much less intense use than commercial to have multi-family. The parcel was set vacant for, forever. It was intended to, I believe, be developed as a coffee shop, cleaners, general commercial use, but within the past five, 10 years, or however long it has been, no one has really ever come forward to develop that. We feel that with the adjacent parcels of multi-family, Waterston to the north, the Assistance Care Facility, leave to the north, the condos are also adjacent on Waterston Drive, I believe. It's a relatively good buffer between the residential further vacant development. Consort Development has projects in Orient Township, the Village of Lake Orient, and several other communities around Michigan and in other states as well. Their desire to produce a high-end condominium community for pretty much empty nesters. It'll be, we're gonna eliminate the curb cut on Waterston Drive, and what's different from this and the other community to the north, that we'll have a private road going through development, so there will maybe be two curb cuts out of the development, so they'll be eliminating the need for individual curb cuts to the street, so that's kind of a benefit as well. But we intend to-
It's a necessity, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
It's a necessity.
Yes.
You can't do it.
Yes, oh, gotcha.
So I don't want people to think it's your idea.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what was there, what's there now, so. Anyway, we feel it's a good fit, and we believe here to have to answer any questions.
Well, let's, Joe?
Sewer. Is sewer enough there, is there enough sewer there for our end?
Sure.
I know water there.
I can say that to the gentleman over there.
It is.
Yes.
Are used.
The people would want, I can start out. I have a problem with the, I have a problem with rezoning it. And when I rezon it, I have to think about the ultimate use that can be put in there. And looking at the 4.5 acre parcel to the north, you could put in over 100 bedrooms. That bothers me. Along with how many bedrooms could you put to the south? It seems awful intense for that area. Another concern I have is keyhole in the lake. Can the residents on the 4 acre, 4.5 acre to the north have access to the lake, causing problems with the lakefront homeowners? I don't have these answers, but those just kind of glare at me. Plus, there's, I'm kind of disappointed that the Planning Commission didn't get the information that the township got in our war pack. I know they didn't get a drawing showing a whole bunch of buildings on that site that looks pretty intimidating. Plus, I wish the residents, they did, and we do have some petitions, quite a few, from the residents that we just got. I'm disappointed that they didn't do this at the Planning Commission, where I did talk to some Planning Commission members today, I've got all these signatures, and I know the Planning Commission didn't have the ability to see this. So again, I'm disappointed that the two bodies got different information. Those are my concerns. Anybody else?
I do have concerns about the rezoning. I don't think it meets with master plan that we had developed for a joint. And I have the same concerns you do in terms of the number of combinations that could be provided in that area.
Well, you've got over 100 bedrooms, could be, that would be 52-bedroom apartments, or, you know, whatever. And the amount of automobiles that that would generate. I know it's up to the developer to try to, you know, make as much money you can on a project, but this one just scares me. It scares me where it's at. Any other questions?
Is there any possibilities for that area that, for commercial use?
No, there hasn't been any.
No interest?
No interest whatsoever. We can't even fill the ones on M24.
Right.
And it's the most difficult, you know, coming in, you got the weird turnarounds up there at M24 and Market Street, and it's just cumbersome to get in there. I don't think a mid, a commercial would be viable there, because apparently other people feel the same way.
I still have the concern that if we rezoned it, the impact it's going to have on the existing community.
Well, it's just the, what, you know, someone could propose something, you know, to us, and, you know, we're gonna do this, and all of a sudden, well, we rezon it, and all of a sudden, they just go, "Well, we want to put a little more in here." And as long as they bring in something that meets our ordinance, whether it's one-story, two-story, three-story, you know, we just don't know.
It will be developed according to your ordinance?
But according to the ordinance, you could put over 100 bedrooms to the one in the north, and probably 50 bedrooms, and it bothers me, that's a lot of bedrooms to throw in that door. It just, I have to plan for the ultimate use for the new rezoning. And, well, I think you probably know how I'm gonna go. Anybody else got any questions?
Yes, just a comment on, as far as the iron zoning, that might be one of the best choices in that area for property, that's a lot. But for me, when I look at this plan, as the supervisor done said, we give you a rezoning of our end, you have an open opportunity to come back and pull whatever's in there, but we see ordinance, we have no control over that. So for me, I'd like to see something more definitive that you will commit to, which will build before I rezon it.
I don't have enough information here.
What I'd like to see is, because we're not in agreement with the C1 or the RM, to mandate back to the Planning Commission, take all this information that we have, and then re-review everything, come up with a zoning that they can level that they think will pass.
Again, I'm kind of disappointed, and, you know, it might be my office's fault, that, you know, that they didn't get all the same information, but again, it came in at the last minute, and we apologize for that. But I kind of agree with you, Joe. Do you have any problem with that, Jack?
No.
To send it back to the Planning Commission? And allow the people that are opposed to it to voice their opinion with you guys?
No, this piece is right for a PUD, and I don't know, if you went down to residential, you can still do a PUD in residential, so there are alternatives.
to residential, you can still do a PUD in residential, so there are alternatives.
I believe when we had met several years ago, we did discuss the PUD option, but based on the timetable, at the time, the developer was under a purchase agreement with the previous owner of that part of the properties.
Oh, yeah.
If we would have did it then, we would have a PUD right now.
Right. But with the purchase agreement, we were under a certain amount of time to develop it, that timeframe lapsed, and they went ahead and decided to purchase the property anyway. So today, we still, we're going to go with the rezoning.
So Larry Laxton, those people don't own it anymore?
No, sir. It's now owned by Consort Development LLC.
I'm going to make a motion that we send it back to the Planning Commission to have it re-reviewed.
Would you recommend that we reapply as a PUD?
I would invest.
I'd let you make that, make that decision yourself. We're not here to recommend anything.
We're asking for guidance on, we met three or four years ago, and this is where we are.
Go back to the Planning Commission and work it out with them, you know what I mean? One thing you can do is go in before the meeting and meet in the office and discuss it, and try to work out some, some sort of a plan that might be acceptable to the people and the Planning Commission.
Another meeting with the township?
A pre-app.
Yeah, exactly.
Just like a pre-app.
Gotcha.
But I just can't just rezon it and just hope you don't build it to the max, three stories. I mean, you say no, but if the zoning says you can do it, and you meet the zoning, you can't deny it. That scares me.
Okay, state your motion.
Yeah, please.
You want to remand the rezoning request of the two parcels, PO 421, 2002, and PO 420, 2005, back to the Oxford Township Planning Commission, and review possible other zonings rather than the C1 commercial or the RM multiple?
I'll support that.
Let's move.
I'd like to add one thing to that, though, is, let's clarify why we're sending it back. The Planning Commission did not have all this information.
That's a romantic effect.
They did not.
Oh, they did not.
Number one. Number two, a pre-app would be better to justify to the residents more what you're going to do than in a PUD or that avenue would give the residents more, to answer Bill's questions, you know, a lot of things going on that they don't want.
Yes, but you're not excluding them for reapplying to enhance the RM option. Correct, no, they can do whatever they want.
They can do RM, do a PUD at RM, but what's it bill?
It's all a promotion to explore other options in addition.
I just wanted to send it back to the Planning Commission.
Of course, to a C1 or an RM zoning.
Exactly. There are other options out there.
But that, they're applying for that.
They can apply for anything they'd like.
But is that a promotion to exclude them?
No, because they're fluid, and it says that we're not going to, we'd rather them not consider those two. They could add them as part of a PUD possibly, or as part of a different zoning.
But then we'd be directing them towards on they can apply from.
Well, I mean, they've kind of got it here anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, pretty much.
The Planning Commission approved, recommended for us to approve a rezoning already tomorrow.
But evidently, it's not a priority. But they didn't have all the information either.
I think they got the.
We're just asking what are we zoning? It's all, we're rezoning RM, that's all we're asking.
This motion is higher, understand, is we don't want you coming back with an RM zoning option to the Planning Commission.
I don't, that's why I made this motion.
The Planning Commission can send it back RM zoning, but it would be in a PUD.
Okay.
The decision would be between the township and developer.
I think they understand what our temperature is here at the board.
Because we still want a straight C1 or a straight RM.
Right.
Correct.
There's other options.
It is RM.
You want the whole package.
We don't like that. We don't like the RM.
Correct. And RM with an additional tweak to it might be beneficial to.
And I want the residents, you guys are residents, I want, I'd like you guys to go to the Planning Commission and be part of it.
Make sure that we're notified.
Yes.
Make sure we're notified.
I apologize if you weren't before. I'll take responsibility for that, but you will be notified of the Planning Commission.
We appreciate your interest in the residence of the community.
We appreciate you guys coming out, showing your.
It's an entirely different, it would be, an entirely different community, that they do what they say they want to do.
Well, we're going to start, and we'll see, see what we come up with here.
Good.
All in favor, just go. I believe the requirement for notifications 300 feet within property, so some property is that, I don't know. I've been here, you're unsworn. What the zoning ordinance says is that usually, in such property, you plan, notify people where 300 feet of a, you suck in property boundary.
So it's a very small boundary, you take where it's at, 300 feet around there, we have to notify everybody.
There's 300 feet?
Just 300 feet.
So I had a notification, and many other people that were much closer did not get it.
Oh, I will apologize for the township for that. You will, we will make sure that everyone gets going.
Thank you.
If you could, you know, we all sign in, if you can, we all, everybody's.
Oh, we got all your names. The tracker, the one that collects all the taxes, has your names. It's, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You got yours?
Thank you.
Let's get Skip McCarroll up here. Skip McCarroll is our local prosecutor for people that don't want to follow the law.
Working undercover, my dress today.
Undercover? You're here as a golfer.
If I could only play golf. Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, trustees, thanks for having me. Tonight, you have the second reading of Causing a Police Response. This is a civil infraction that would be punishable by up to $250 fine. It would be in lieu of a criminal charge that might be brought against someone where that disposition would be the appropriate disposition in District Court. You also have attempt crime ordinance. What this is, is a recapture of a state law that allows crimes to be rated as an attempt, which reduces potential jail time in half, but leaves fines and costs in place. Both of these tools are very useful in prosecution of other cases of other communities where we've had these ordinances. It clarifies for the judges that the local unit of government supports these dispositions, and also permits us some wiggle room, for lack of a better term, when an appropriate case comes before us. We don't use them that often, but when we do, they appear to be very appropriately disposed of in terms of what otherwise might be a crime being attached to an individual, or a more serious crime being attached. So you've already had the opportunity to look at them. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer them.
Any questions?
I move to approve Criminal Crime Causing a Police Response for the number 131, in ordinance to mention chapter 30, Article 1, the Oxford Township Court of Ordinances as presented.
Moved, and we're going to, elegance, second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trusty Curtis.
Yes.
Trusty Payne.
Yes.
Professor Farrar.
Yes.
Superintendent Dunn.
Yes.
Trusty Darke.
Yes.
I move to approve attempt to commit a crime, ordinance number 130, in order to mention chapter 30, Article 1, Oxford Township Court of Ordinances as presented.
Support.
Moved, and seconded. Roll call. Trusty Nichols.
Yes.
Trusty Darke.
Yes.
Superintendent Dunn.
Yes.
Professor Farrar.
Yes.
Trusty Payne.
Yes.
And Trusty Curtis.
Yes.
Let's move on to Fire Department Recognition. I can't get this to come up on my computer here. Would someone volunteer to read the letter I got from, is that one there? I'm going to need either a beer or a glass of water to be able to do this. Would someone like to read this?
I will.
Thank you, Jack. This is, this is a good one.
This letter was addressed to Mr. Dunn, Township Supervisor, Oxford Township. Mr. Dunn, as I am sure you are aware, Orient Township had a structured fire last evening that resulted in two fatalities. When we were dispatched, it came in as a house explosion and a fire, possible trapped victims. We activated our mutual aid request immediately, and your department, along with other, several other, others responded and assisted with setting up and running a water shuttle operation along the firefighting line with our people. This was a great asset in being able to bring the fire under control in a minimum amount of time. Unfortunately, with everyone's tremendous efforts, we were not able to save the two victims, however, the younger daughter was saved and treated with minor member, minor injuries. One thing I would like to bring to your attention, Mr. Dunn, the Oxford crew, along with Chief Schultz, went nonstop in the recovery process. Your crew was flawless in their work efforts, and we were thankful for their presence and abilities in complete operation, clearing the debris away, hauling water, and many other tasks needed to be completed. Thank you, and all of the townships who allow our mutual aid back and abilities to share our resources with each other's. Best regards, Robert G. Smith, Fire Chief, Orient Township Fire Department.
That's a lot of our feelings to the boys and girls. Do you have anything else, Chief? Joanne? Oh, quiet tonight. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Oh, ALPU. This is a resolution we got from Attorney Rentrup. I got it at 6 o'clock tonight. I apologize for, for not getting to you sooner. What we have here is the ongoing ALPU, trying to resolve this problem, it's been around here for at least 18 years. Should we read this? Actually, we would like to pass this resolution. Gary Rentrup would like to see this passed. Again, I apologize for getting it to you late. It allows us to go ahead and start a special assessment district for the ALPU crowd, and we can stop it at any time, but this is going to help us try to come to some conclusion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 1, tentative declaration to attempt to establish a special assessment district as presented.
Second.
Removed and seconded. All, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The last one here is the crypt prices. I can't believe what they get for a crypt. I'm wondering, asked a question before, but it's amazing. No, I have parents, right?
Yeah, this is a unique request that came into the court's office, and we had an individual that was interested in purchasing a crypt out of a mausoleum, and we didn't have any prices set for solving crypts, because we've never done it in our township. So why I bring this to you is to try to figure out what price is, a fair price to charge somebody not only for the purchase, for the right, but also for the fair cost. So Kelly did in the office, she called around to various areas that have mausoleums, and as you can see, the prices on those range from 1,800 up towards the $20,000. To me, I don't think you can sell them any crypts for $20,000. So that's why I bring this forward to you. We contacted the Jersey Dally Ball, indicated that their price would be $315, but we're going to close the vault, and currently, our sale of grave regularly is $400. So that's $115 right there on pocket to perform the area itself.
It's more than my first house.
This is your last house.
Just to give some people some tidings. I don't need to be big. Never been to our mausoleum. This is the mausoleum on Berry Street on the south side. There's an outside picture of it. This is a picture facing the east of the mausoleum. Mausoleum, it goes, the date is on there, it's 1924, the Roman numerals. And here's some pictures of the inside of the crypt, if you've never been in it, which most of us haven't. That's the, as you enter into the mausoleum. Picture here looking, looking to the north.
Don't look like $20,000 worth to me.
Chris, what are they looking at buying? What they buy?
They don't know yet. I said I have to be that.
Somebody wants to buy the crypt.
That's what I, you've had the opportunity to let me get.
You buy a burial.
Buy one of those and get your future home.
This is a self, self view. This is a, this is a picture of what a crypt looks like. Some people have buried in here. This is a crypt, I'll take a little brain, which is probably one of the early settlers, and I should probably name, the brain was named after that individual.
So it's a stack of materials.
He was two years, two years ahead of me.
There's a couple hours, you can see, see a crypt in there. Most recent crypt buried, I saw in 1990, that was engraved on one of the cliffs.
What did they pay? We have a record of what they paid for that one.
You got the longest tenure, you'll solve.
You're 25 years old.
That's before me.
And this is, this is the map of the mausoleum, and so we have 152 crypts, dots there, the red ones indicate they're occupied, the green ones mean they're sold and not occupied, and then nothing, so there's a reason available. So we have 50 crypts that are available, so that is trying to sell the price, and there, if anybody calls now in the future, and something's established on that.
Check the records, the next one's occupied?
No.
You know.
It's like cremation or something.
Superintendent Dunn, I made it, I kind of made a joke about this, but it's, no one is coming seeking these crypts. People, people don't know that they're there, and seeking guardian angels on Rochester Road, you can see those monolithic crypts, you can see the ones at Whitechapel. People don't realize that there are crypt space available. To me, I don't know where I'm going when I'm dead, probably in a hazmat dump, but what, what I was thinking is, you know, if you want to get rid of them all now for eight price, is do some sort of a sale and advertise and put this money in the cemetery fund, should you need funds to repair anything else in the cemetery.
We've got a blue light.
Exactly. You have a guardian angel at $9,600 for a crypt. If you sold 50 crypts at $10,000, you know, you take that money and use it to build, approve something in the cemetery to fix it. If not, we set the price at $10,000.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
There's a motion to set the price at $10,000. There's support. I'll support it for discussion. Yes.
We'll need two prices, one to purchase burial night, and one for the opening and closing.
You just got to prove Genesis, whatever it is every year, so the motion is.
I'll, I'll make them, that was Jack's motion.
That's my one. Well, we have to, we have to change our price yearly based on Genesis cost, so this year's cost would be $315. I'll amend my motion to include that crypt opening and closing would be $315.
Let me restate this before Kelly. I move to approve the resolution to establish the fee of $10,000 versus a crypt, a fee of $315 per slight scale as Genesis values prices go up, crypt burial in the mausoleum will get announced by Oxford Township. That's your motion, again.
Well, if I would have went up to the top and read that, yeah.
Why don't we leave off, I would have supported for our discussion. Let's leave off the burial price, because we can just charge whatever the going price is. Let's split the $10,000.
That's how the purchase of a crypt period.
I don't think they're going to go like hotcakes.
1890, they haven't been sold.
A matchbook looks, a matchbox looks a lot better. Let's do roll call.
Okay, Superintendent Dunn?
Yes.
For Price. Farrar, you guys. Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
No.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Price is $10,000.
Okay, we're, we're going to have to ask everybody to leave, because we're going to have a closed session.
I move to approve the hiring of Froman Whitmer to provide appraisal services to the Oxford Township, Brooks Litigation of Devil's Ridge LLC, for the Oxford Township Oxford, which is a tax return of 1,616, that's 032119, for the appraisal amount not to exceed up to $10,000 for both 2016 and 2017 tax remunerations, and to retain legal services of active, submitted out.
and need an Allen, we have the Oxford Township, we pay confidentiality, this tax tribunal matter.
Support.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Workright, yes. Trusty Darb?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
I'm going to ask my chief, is there any board comment, thirty with Elgin?
Yeah, I think Pete Schultz, the fire chief, and his crew did a fantastic job with the emergency that they had. Also, I'd like to comment on Ron Davis and his group, success that he had, you know, with this Seymour Lakes program that he had last weekend, is fantastic from what I understand. Good job, Ron.
Thank you. We've come to expect it, too.
Yeah.
Same thing, did a good job, Ron, Ron. Did a good job.
Curtis?
Same thing, good job, Ron, thank for our department, job they do, and also, I would like to put second is the next one I have today, is at the Clarkston Elementary School on the.
I would also like to include the sheriff department, they did a wonderful job. The bikes are out there, they were noticed and appreciated. Again.
They're going, right?
They were, they borrowed some. Also, Ron and his crew, they do a wonderful job. What else? There's something else, but I may have to do a do-over.
We've kind of been talking here and there for a couple of minutes, should we talk about inspecting sidewalks? In our meeting, or the planning commission will review that?
Why don't you put it on the next board agenda, if you want.
I should go to the planning commission first, I'm not reviewing.
Well, for your information, the planning commission has ad nauseam reviewed the sidewalk ordinance, and it, if you'd like to hear about it, I'm sure that we could sit down and talk to you about it. I think emailing things to a bunch of different people is disadvantageous to the township. There are instances where we may be liable now, but we are trying to get it to put in all sidewalks in residential one, and the ordinance would then be changed. Currently, we don't own a sidewalk. We don't own a sidewalk, we do not maintain a sidewalk in Oxford Township. So, we are looking at changing the ordinance, it's on the list of things to do.
Joe, Joe, this is not agenda item.
I got, it just means.
Comment, we're not going to have back and forth. Jack, you got anything else?
I'll make a motion, Sheriff.
What about Marjorie?
She said, she said no.
Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.